All right, I got 6:01. Is PEG TV ready? Okay. Everyone there is good? Mary, good?
Yep.
Sharon, ready to rock?
I am.
All right, one request would be for those in the audience, if you speak rather loud so people on Zoom can hear you, okay? So this is going to be our first meeting, as you know. Are we rolling PEG TV? Good. This will be our first meeting in person since the beginning of March due to the pandemic. We're trying it sort of a hybrid, some in person, some on Zoom. And did John Paul, are you on yet?
No, he's not.
Okay, so we have three board members right now, so that's good. Mary, Sharon, and I are in person. John Paul's going to dial in, and Joey, I don't believe, is going to be with us tonight. So anyways, let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Byron, if you can't hear us, you speak up, all right?
Sure, I'll let you know.
All right, thanks.
Everything's good so far?
It's early, Byron.
Okay.
All right, the town minutes of June 23rd. Were there any deletions, corrections, or additions?
John Paul has joined.
Hey, John Paul, are you there?
I am.
All right, sir, we just got started. We're just, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of June 23rd.
So moved.
Motion by Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sharon. For discussion. Paul is in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero. There you go, Mary. We are well social-distanced here in the fire station. Hi Barbara, I see you there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, thank you.
All right. All board members in person have seen the orders. We did strike one salary line that needs correction. We're going to get that for two weeks from now. John Paul, we'll talk to you about that afterwards.
Okay.
It wasn't yours.
Yeah, it wasn't. Mary said it wasn't your salary line we cut, so don't worry about it. Any questions from the floor, public comment? Anyone in person or on Zoom who wishes to speak to the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll move right on. Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant of the Select Board, you're up, Bill.
Okay. Up here. Good evening. Have a few things for you here. Both of the packet first. Number one is the agenda items. Not much has changed in the past two weeks. Still pretty much same list on there. Number two-
No audio from Bill.
Bill, no audio.
I should have audio.
Thanks, Byron. Bill is running through the agenda items. He started with number one, with this is the upcoming meetings and events for the Select Board and so on. We've got some committee meetings that we should start to schedule to start to talk about, so-
And we got closer. Is that better, Byron?
That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay. Number two is from Brookfield Service. It's for the annual maintenance agreement for the town generators.
So, I have a question. Do we approve the one for the school and keep them all together, or does the school do the one for them?
The list is page three. And it includes the school.
And they reimburse us?
Are we in a hurry to do this, Scott? Was kind of Joey's thing.
I don't believe so. This just came yesterday, day before.
Why don't we table it for two weeks, then? We'll talk about it when Joe's back with us.
There is a discount built into the contract there on the front page. We do get a slight discount if we pay by July 20th.
By July what?
20th.
Let them know that we need that discount, and it's going to be July 24th.
I can pass it along.
All right.
Number three came from Johnson Energy for an annual field contract.
So Johnson Energy's been our preferred vendor for a long time. They've done a great job for the town of Rutland. This is looking at August 1st, 2020 through June 30th of 2021. That's 35 cents per gallon over Johnson Energy costs on day of delivery with a maximum cap rate of $2.99 for the contract period. Today's rate based on this was $1.719. What's the board's pleasure?
It's a sweet rate.
They've done a good job. Why should we go elsewhere?
You want to make a motion for that, Sharon?
I make a motion that we go with Johnson Energy based on how they've treated us in the previous years.
Second.
Motion by Sharon, seconded by Mary to award Johnson Energy the contract. John Paul, do you abstain from this typically?
Yeah.
I do.
Okay, I also have to abstain from this for additional reasons. So we need Joey here for this one.
Okay.
Sound fair, everyone?
Yep.
All right. We'll just let, this doesn't, and I can call Tom Johnson and tell him that we're going to wait two weeks, all right?
I don't think that's a problem.
Yeah. Should be okay. It's for August 1st, so-
Yeah.
Yep. So just, yeah. Next is from the Rutland Region Chamber of Commerce, a request for us to renew our membership.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by John Paul, seconded by Sharon to renew our membership with the Rutland Region Chamber of Commerce. For discussion.
Is this what it was last year?
Looks like the same rate of 1,400.
Yeah, okay.
Paul is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes? What else, Bill?
Number five is follow-up on the Harbor Freight Act 250 permit. It is the response from V-Trans on the traffic study and quite a bit of information about it. But basically giving their approval on their part of it moving forward. So that's for your reading purpose.
It's a great response for the town, and I think it reflects the hard work that Mary did on that sidewalk next to you, Paul, because they're talking about that pedestrian infrastructure and approving of the 100. So kudos to Mary.
Thank you.
Can you say that louder, she didn't hear it?
Yeah, louder, JP!
Kudos to Mary!
Thank you.
All right, good. So nothing really to report there, that's good information for us.
Make sure Barbara has a copy of this.
Barbara, did you see a copy of that? All right, thanks.
Okay.
Let's go, Bill.
Number six, no, you should have a number seven in there. Are copies of letters that were sent out. This is going back to-
I lost you, Bill.
Oop.
No, I'm not hearing you.
Hang on, hang on. There we go, sorry. So number six, it goes back to our previous discussions on sewer allocation. There are some that did not follow up in the timeframe, so sent them the second request letter. So that's what those are. And the, there's three of them that are for exceeding the allocation, and the last one is for no allocation. So those are follow-up letters. You've seen them before. It's just a copy of what's gone out for the second time. And then on your desk are two things. One, the letter for John Tremblay after he stepped down from maintenance at Northwood Park. Josh, you have an original there to sign.
Yes, so John Tremblay's been a hard and faithful employee of the town, part-time at Northwood. He is stepping back and retiring, so we had asked Bill to draft a little thank you letter I have here so we can all sign and send off to him for his service to the town. So I'll circulate that now. What else you have, Bill?
The last is from the Rutland Housing Authority in regards to property they're looking to develop on Woodstock Avenue, Route 4 East. And I believe Kevin's here to talk about that. So we have Kevin here to discuss their request.
Okay.
I can't hear anything, Bill.
Nobody's talking.
Hold on, John Paul, I'm almost there. All right, so we have Kevin Lozo here from the Housing Authority. Kevin, how are you?
I'm well, how are you doing?
Good, thanks for coming.
Where do you like me? Any place you could be?
You're right there, you're fine.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
First, let me start, well, I am Kevin Lozo, I'm the Director of the Rutland Housing Authority and a resident-
Hold on one second, Kevin. John Paul or Byron, can you guys hear Kevin?
Not very well.
All right. We have you move up here a little bit in the front. We can social distance still, and you can talk-
Where is the speaker?
He can hear into mine, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so come this way.
Move up more closer?
Yeah, move it-
Standing 6 feet?
Yeah, that's good. We're going to move him a little closer here. All right, Kevin.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm Kevin Lozo, I'm the Executive Director of the Rutland Housing Authority, and I live in Charlie's Place here in the town. As you know, the CARES Act has channeled a significant amount of money to the states, and one of the avenues that the state has decided to in turn channel some of that money towards is the rehousing of folks who have been essentially stuck in motels.
Really rough to hear that.
John Paul, I'm going to give Kevin this laptop so we can talk right to it, all right?
Great, man.
Well, plug it.
Good evening.
Talk better.
Thank you. Again, I'm Kevin Lozo, the Executive Director of the Rutland Housing Authority and a resident of Charlie's Place here in Rutland Town. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight. I also want to thank Bill Sweet, who has demonstrated extraordinary patience and professionalism in answering my many questions regarding the subject property, 101 Route 4 East, also Woodstock Avenue. As you know, the federal government has channeled a significant amount of resources to the states to help address the current coronavirus pandemic. One of those areas that the state has in turn allocated those funds towards is the housing for folks who are either previously homeless or made homeless as a result of the COVID virus pandemic. Here in Rutland County, we have nearly 200 individuals and families who are forced into motels because they either lost their homes or apartments or had to vacate sort of migrant shelters where the CDC recommendations and guidelines could not be met, and so there was a real risk of the spread of the virus. The Vermont Housing Conservation Board-
Can I stop you there?
Sure.
Are you saying that the shelters couldn't meet the guidelines? Because I take issue with that, Kevin.
Well, I would say that in other parts of the-
Because we met all the guidelines.
Sure, in other parts of the state, their physical, their facilities were not set up to truly meet the guidelines. So I can't speak to the Rutland Mission, but I'm sure that if you're still, if it's still occupied, that you've done so with the utmost care in meeting-
We have, and we also have met the federal guidelines also because we have a contract with the VA. So I don't want people out there thinking-
I'm glad you clarify that, because I didn't in any way want to suggest that our local shelter was not compliant, but many of the shelters around the state had to empty out because of the fact that primarily their facilities could not ensure appropriate social distancing, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
So again, the Vermont Housing Conservation Board has been funded, one of many housing programs. This one totals about $25 million. There was a letter of intent that was due last Friday, but it seems like a month ago because we have been scaring so quickly to generate a response. And that response is a two-phase response. The first phase represents the conversion of the old John Deere property to nine units of housing that will immediately meet the need. And that particular facility, which I'll speak to later, will ultimately be sort of transitional housing. The second component is a project actually in the city. We're working with Dan Call with Construction on a turnkey basis to completely rehab three buildings that will result in around 10 units of permanently affordable housing, which we will achieve through project basing of Section 8 subsidy. Long-term and short-term, we anticipate that people who are of the highest need will first be housed at Woodstock Avenue, where they'll receive wraparound services. There'll be a full-time supervision, and there will be office space so as to ensure that our program partners like Rutlandal Health, the Homeless Prevention Center, and Brock, as well as the hospital, will have access to provide services on a one-to-one basis without having to, or a one-to-family basis without having to actually enter units. One of the components of this initiative is that we are negotiating with Rutland Regional Medical Center to master lease two, possibly three, units. And that would enable them to discharge clients, actually discharge patients who would otherwise be stuck in the hospital because you can't discharge people into homelessness. So they will in turn follow up with any clinical care that is necessary to support those individuals. And they'll most likely do it in partnership with the Visiting Nurse Association. So the project has been moving very, very quickly, in large part because, as you probably know, the coronavirus relief funds have to be fully expended by '12. Well, in our case, '12, 2020, which is just a very ambitious schedule. But we've secured commitments from a local contractor for Woodstock Avenue, and of course, Joey and Jerry Paul will serve as his own contractor for the properties on Pine Street. What we're seeking is a, what would be great is a letter of support that I drafted and gave to Bill. The minimum requirement that I have to comply with in order to continue in the process is to get verification from the town that the plan is not in violation of any zoning ordinances. And my understanding is that we don't have-
Correct.
-zoning ordinances here in the town, but I can stand corrected if there is anything that I'm-
No zoning.
I will tell you, and again, happening very quickly, but I will tell you that it is our intent to meet with the neighbors, not just the abbotters, but the immediate, primarily business owners, obviously, to inform them of our plan and to get any feedback. We anticipate opening by certainly the end of the year and leasing up those families who are essentially stranded. So I think I covered all of it, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
No, I'm glad to hear that you're going to have on-premise staff 24/7, because I think you'll probably agree with me, the failure of previous places to have family shelters have failed because there hasn't been onsite staff.
Absolutely, and I guess I'm reluctant to use it for a shelter because this is a little different in that we fully intend to provide not only the supervision but the wraparound services so as to get people moved out and into permanent housing. As far as Pine Street apartments go, we would of course welcome referrals from the Mission for those folks who are looking to move on to, you know, permanently affordable housing in the community.
So this location, Kevin, at the old John Deere store, these would be temporary apartments while people are looking to be, for permanent residence, or these are going to be permanent residents?
They would be both. They would be both permanent to the extent that we can transition people out and into permanently affordable units out in the community. Again, the hospital is, we're currently negotiating with the hospital and making great progress on two or three of those units being under a master lease so that they can get family, individuals primarily, out of the hospital where the hospital incurs significant cost, obviously, and impacts their length of stay, which is sort of a criteria by which hospitals are both evaluated and compensated. So they have a keen interest in the project.
So I think you answered my question, but this wouldn't be a family, say, a low-income family could come to you and say, "I want to rent one of these apartments," and sign a year lease with you.
No.
Right.
The intent is truly short-term. Sort of a problematic aspect to this is we want to get them into ideally a Section 8 situation, whether it's a project base or a tenant base. We can't do that on this property because of the fact that it would require a 12-month lease, and that's, you know, we want this to be a step along the way. We don't want it to be a destination. We want it to be a step along the way towards not only securing permanently affordable housing, but once they get to Pine Street, we will continue to work with them through our community partners to develop family self-sufficiency, so hopefully at some point they will not require a subsidy. I mean, that's a dream. Don't get me wrong, that's not always easy, but that is our intent, and that's a program that we're setting up so as to support them in that process.
So there'll be life skills taught at that. Now, you're talking the John Deere facility will be where that takes place, and then they'll transition into Pine Street?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have, upfront, we'll have pretty intensive services so as to ensure that people are being supported appropriately. But really, the level of service would be more intensive at Woodstock Avenue because the goal is to get people ready to move out into the community, whether it's Pine Street or another property. We want to make sure that they have the life skills that you mentioned, as well as, you know, from a, not just developing the project, I'm also a property manager, given all the units that we have responsibility for. And we want to make sure that people have developed the skills to comply with the terms of a rental lease. And for some families, that's a, you know, that's a struggle. But we'll have Rutlandal Health, we'll have Homeless Prevention Center, we'll have Brock, and in some cases, we'll have the hospital, all coming together to support that effort.
And if a family moved in with school-age children, these children would be temporarily enrolled in our elementary school?
Well, our intent is to not disrupt their education-
Right.
-and where they're receiving their schooling. So we'll work with those districts, wherever they are, to ensure that students can continue to attend.
Then that's a good idea.
And I only-
I think it's also a plea call, but I think it is a requirement that's placed on the school districts in situations where children may be transient for some period of time.
Gotcha. And I ask these questions just because I'm trying to wrap my head around this project, because it's not something that we have a lot of.
Sure.
So, interesting concept. Mary, did you have questions?
I had a couple.
Well, go ahead.
I like the concept. You're converting a commercial use over to a residential use, short-term residential. And the amount of land involved, I'm thinking, are you triggering Act 250?
That's a great question.
Yeah.
Our original concept called for 10 units, but anything at or greater than 10 units triggers Act 250.
Right.
That's why our design at this point-
Is a nine?
Allows, I guess, nine units.
Okay, all right.
Now, we have worked with the architect to design the building in such a way that should we determine that the addition of a 10th unit is merited in light of, well, we think the demand will be there, but in light of the expenses associated with going through Act 250, then we may move in that direction. But that's down the road. Right now, we're finding on that, so it's go void Act 250.
Okay, that makes sense. Maximum occupancy, if you had nine units?
It would be a, it would be a one of a couple of efficiencies, three or four two-bedroom units, and the balance would be one-bedroom units. So based on occupancy standards, you could conceivably have parents or parents and up to two children in a two-bedroom.
Okay. So I'm counting somewhere around 22, 23?
Yeah, I think that's a good ballpark.
Okay.
We would not overhouse families because that is not consistent with our policies, nor do I think it's a good idea, frankly, to crowd people into a unit. In those situations, we would need to look long and hard at achieving eligibility for larger families in one of the Pine Street apartments.
Right.
Depending on the needs and their, frankly, their rental history. Although I would remind you that at this point in time, we have families who are homeless through no fault of their own.
Yes.
Most people are homeless through the fault of their own, some are. But the coronavirus has taken a toll on a number of families who were working jobs before this hit and subsequently sadly lost employment income.
Yeah.
That has hopefully temporarily put them in this position, but we would work with them to get them, you know, back into the job market.
Just to plug my own project, the Vermont Bar Association and Vermont Legal Aid are getting a chunk of the money, and we're going to be doing some foreclosure defense, and we're going to be doing some landlord-tenant work. So you might want to connect with me or connect with-
I would love to.
-the local legal aid folks, yeah.
I'd love to. And I'm sure Legal Aid is aware of the RLOI, Request for Letters of Intent-
Yeah.
-for the rehousing program that is being administered. Well, we're looking for an administrator, regional administrators, that's why they issued the request. And those funds will provide for up to 30,000 per unit for landlords that have, for property owners, hopefully not landlords, but property owners who have substandard units that could meet housing quality standards, code, certificate of occupancy required. meet housing quality standards, code, certificate of occupancy requirements, if only they had the money to invest in those properties.
Are those grants or are they low-interest loans?
Yeah, grants.
Wow.
With a 10% match requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great program for property owners who would like to pursue rehabbing rental units or developing rental units, but for whom money is a major obstacle.
Okay.
So that's our, that Request for Letter, Letters of Intent will, went out today to the possible administrators of that program, and there again, they have a very, very rapid requirement requirement. So-
So to get us back on track here, sorry, I digress, but I would move we issue the letter of support for this project.
I just wanted to ask John Paul if he had any questions, Mary? Do you mind if I-
Well, I mean, yeah, sure.
Not at all.
Yeah, go ahead.
Not at all, if you'd like to. Anyone else? Wonderful.
Okay, Kevin, take it away. Mary, go ahead, make your motion.
I made, I made the motion, it hasn't been seconded.
Mary made the motion to support the letter.
Thank you.
Is there, who seconded it?
Sharon.
Sharon. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes four to zero, Kevin.
Um-
It looks like I have a copy of a letter that says draft across it.
Yeah, and it needs to be printed on, on the waterhead and, you know, with any changes that you might have. And out of both the practices, each select person signs a letter, but in the interest of facilitating it, I hope that one of you could stop-
When do you need it? When do you need it?
Really first thing-
Yesterday.
Okay.
Part of the insanity of this process.
So I can, I can-
Kevin, I have one more question.
Of course.
Do you want to just, okay, I was just gonna say, do you want me to authorize me to sign it?
Are you going to be teaching cooking skills and stuff? And if so, where? And if so, you might want to hook up with me because I'd be more than willing to use our kitchen to teach-
Oh, thank you so much.
Cooking skills.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that.
So, you know, no charge to-
Thank you.
You know, but I-
We'll pay for the food.
Do you want, you want everyone to sign or you want me to sign?
You know, I've been yelling about this for years. You can call it a homeless shelter, you can call it whatever you want, but we need a place for children to be safe, and in a shelter is not the place.
No.
So, and I've been running that shelter, going on 30 years, so.
Yeah, the options in the community frankly are not great for children.
No, no, I agree.
And I should have said in my presentation that families with children are really the target for these towns. That being said, our individual homeless population in motels right now is about three to one individuals, but certainly with those multi-bedroom units, that's who we're going to be focused on here.
So Josh points out that we have a short timeline, so I would move that we authorize Josh to sign on behalf of the board the letter of support.
Yep, second.
Second. John Paul, Mary made a motion to authorize me to sign the letter on behalf of the board. Sharon has seconded it. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. I will sign that tomorrow, I can't, but Thursday morning I can go in and sign that letter.
And you can either scan it and email it to me, or if you prefer, you can pick it up.
We can, we can email to you.
Sure.
We can email to you, that's fine.
That's great. I know this is sort of an unusual request for the town, I'm not sure that, you know, how many social services are actually town-based, so I'm most grateful, and I will tell you I'm very proud to be a member of, to be a member of this community. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin, appreciate it.
The work you did with your housing projects in the gut in the city is wonderful, so-
Thank you, I was gonna pull out that ace if I had to.
You didn't have to.
Responsible for tearing down Forest Park and rebuilding an entire neighborhood.
What a difference, what a difference.
Yep, you do.
Thank you again.
Alright, sir, thank you for being here. Take care.
Thanks, Kevin. Don't forget your packet.
Yeah. You left the laptop, right? Okay.
I left the laptop.
Alright, Kevin, thank you. Okay. We just had a couple gentlemen walk in who I don't believe are on the agenda. Did you, are you folks here to listen or did you have something to talk about?
Listen.
Listen?
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Alright. Bill Sweet, did you have anything else?
That was everything. Nope, I'm all done.
Alright, Bill, thank you. Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Hi, I have a couple of things-
You're gonna, we're gonna probably have to-
It's okay, I'm gonna take this off.
Yell loud.
Alright. I have a couple of things which will be really quick, the end of our fiscal year.
Can you guys hear Carrie?
Yeah.
I'm talking to them.
Not real well.
We're gonna need a few more laptops for our next meeting, Billy.
Yeah.
Alright, Billy's moving his computer to Carrie now.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can. Yes, that's good.
So our fiscal year ended 20th of June, and we ended up with $174,000 dollars, five, uh, 177,000 dollars, five sixty-sixty dollars excess, that's five months, that will add back into the capital, capital means we can't guess. Capital improvement fund. And so that is our aim. Josh, you're not signing?
Yeah, so 174,566 dollars will be deposited in the capital improvement fund that the voters authorized a number of years ago for us when there's a surplus per department, less highway, to keep that money in our account versus turning it back to offset the increase of taxes, and that money's going to go towards good projects in the town as we need it, rather than going to bond and other issues that would cost the townspeople more money down the road. So this is a real win and it's a testament to the work of the department heads, of the department heads who really helped us out in a big way, so thank you to all of them. So, Mary, or Sharon, anything on that? No. Continue, Carrie, please.
The next thing that I have, this is just a reminder, I guess the information, the postcards that got in the mail last week, for the absentee ballots, we received a large amount back into the town hall to that process. We also are taking phone calls for absentee ballots in case you would like to do so, and you can also request online to do this as well. This came from the Secretary of State, and if you want your absentee ballot for the August primary as well as the November election, that's your choice on this postcard, and you can get it to us as soon as possible, that would be great. And the last thing that I just want to let residents and my fellow colleagues know is that I received the education tax rate set by the state today, and I ask that we review this and talk about this in two weeks at our next select board meeting and discuss how that will impact our tax rate for the town and for our personal taxes. That's all I have.
Okay, sounds good. Anything further for Carrie?
Just wondering when we set the tax rate. I'm a little fuzzy on that. Is it August or, no, we have to get the bills out, so that's coming up pretty soon.
We have to set it the next meeting.
Okay.
So we'll put that on the agenda, Bill, please.
Carrie put that on the agenda. How would you gonna-
I guess I'm making the agenda, you're on vacation. Oh, boy.
I can hold that.
Yeah, I guess so. Alright, thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Anything, John Paul, for Carrie? Barbara Pulling, Town Planning Commission Chair.
Okay, hi, good evening.
Barbara, I forwarded off your email to me about Kevin and the letter that we need. I sent it to Kevin directly and he hasn't responded back yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Josh.
Did you mute yourself?
Yep. Barb, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Alright, sorry. I had, for everyone, we're waiting on Kevin to draft a letter still in regards to what we talked about two weeks ago with the solar project on Co River Road. Barbara sent me an email today asking about it, and I forwarded your question to Kevin directly and said, "Kevin, we need this immediately." I have not heard back from Kevin yet, Barbara, so.
Yeah, he called me today.
Okay, good.
We talked about it, a little bit about the background, so I think he's on the case now.
Okay, good. Good to hear. Two weeks late, but good to hear.
Right, right.
What else you got for us, Barb?
The planning commission, well, the Town Planning Commission continues to look over the designs for the Pocket Park in Center Utland. The group wants to do a site visit on Thursday evening, and then next Thursday, in our, at our regular meeting, we'll get back together and hopefully come up with some suggestions for the park, you know, if there's some things we want to add. So that's, that's ongoing. The invitation has also been extended to Green Mountain Power and some local residents. Bill, send that out.
Hey, Barb, could I actually talk a little louder?
Oh, okay, sorry about that. So we've got a site visit, the Pocket Park, Thursday. Green Mountain Power's been invited as well as some local residents, and then we'll take up the topic at our regular meeting next Thursday at the 16th, and hopefully come up with some decisions or suggestions at that point. The only other thing I have is if you're ready to untable the Stormwater Online map expenditure, Andres from Watership Consulting has done some work on that, and we've held off payment since about March on that.
How much was that, Barbara?
That was, I, it was money that we had in the planning commission budget last year.
Do we have it for this, this year, this fiscal year we're on?
We have money in this fiscal year now, Barbara, in your budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I would move we approve the purchase of the interactive stormwater map.
Motion by Mary to approve, seconded by Sharon, for discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes, Barbara.
Great, thank you, thank you. That's all I have, unless you have something for the planning commission.
Anything for Barbara or the planning commission folks?
Thanks.
Alright, Barbara, thanks. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Do you have anything? Uh, things, the pool is running very seriously with our participants, as far as our members who come by and so on, so I'm hoping you're all set with that and are good with that. People have been very respectful with our signup process. The other thing is I don't know what you want to do as far as status quo with people using the fields for other activities down in back Northwood, if you want to keep a status quo or if you want to open it for other groups to use that.
Mike, could you speak up?
As far as other groups using down back at Northwood for activities such as Little League Baseball has asked, I'm currently trying to get some rep programming going through that as well, so I don't know if you want to leave that status quo that we've had going that you said I could do in the back with 25 people or less. So I'm just double checking on that to make sure that that's okay, that we just continue what we're doing.
I would say stay where we are at least till the 15th.
Well, continue what we're doing is that they're closed, which is, which is, the signs are up and they're closed, except the school softball field is open, and they're operating under different rules. Yeah.
We also authorized two weeks ago, if you wanted to do 25 or less, like a baseball clinic, you could-
Right, the clinic.
Right, we do.
Exactly, I'm just wondering if you want to keep that status quo or if you want to expand that. That's my question.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of right now keeping things the way they are. Just Mary?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, my daughter wouldn't even let me walk around the closed field because of the signs, so, yeah.
Alright, then the other thing, the only other thing I have are the fireworks, if people have any questions in hearing from other people, you know, the company's always been good, I thought they were a little different this year for whatever it might be, so that's a discussion that we can have later. But as far as the parking, we had approximately 70 cars in the park that night to watch the fireworks. I don't know, Chief, how bad it was on the street or at the school, I'm not sure.
Nothing on the street.
Okay, so we had about 70 cars in the park to watch the fireworks, which, and they were loaded, so there's probably three or four people per car, so there's probably 200, 250, 300 people there in their cars being respectful and watching the fireworks. That's pretty much all I have, unless you have anything for me.
No, Mike, I thought you were going to bring up this-
Oh, yes. One last thing, people have been asking non-residents as far as a pool pass for non-residents. I'm just looking for your guidance, I said I would come tonight. A number that came to mind was typically we charge 120 for a family pass for non-residents, so I was thinking as a neighborhood of 80, if people wanted to purchase a pass for the rest of the year or continue to pay on a daily basis if they come. So I'm just, people were asking, so I thought I would bring it to you to see what you, what your pleasure is, if you mind that I do that, or if you just want me to stick to the page you go. There are some large families that we have.
Okay, my only question is, I don't have a, I don't know what the rest, how the rest feel, but my only question is, if we get further into this COVID thing and we get a rise, and we have to shut down, do we say to them, "If you buy the pass, you buy the pass"?
I think that would be the stipulation, I mean, we're, as a fact that you're buying it, with the assumption that we're being open and if we close, unfortunately we close.
Okay.
That's your decision.
And that's, I guess I have to ask you, Josh, are you-
Well, the other thing is, I think you could also say, say you buy the pass for 80 bucks and you get three weeks to use out of it, you could prorate it to discount next years for that family.
Right, right.
You know, I mean, you could, yeah, we're not refunding you back, but we'll discount next years when things get back to normal.
So I'm just looking if you want me to do that, if that's okay?
Well, I wasn't thrilled with the pass idea until you can, you told me the day, we have a family of eight who live in Mendon who come, and they come every other day, it's three bucks a person, it's like, wow, that's, so we have to do a pass to be fair to everyone.
Right.
That's my opinion.
So if you guys are okay with that, unless you want a different price, which is, that's up to you, I, whatever your guidance is.
I think 80's fine. I think 80's fine. What about you, Mary?
80's fine, but, you know, no guarantees if we have to shut down the pool that they get any of it back.
Right. And I don't think we even, even say that we give a reduction next year. They buy the pass, they know that that's-
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, go for it.
So you guys are all set with that, so that's the only thing, unless you have something for me.
Just an announcement, Jim Hall for our Chaney Hill seniors has set up a luncheon at Sugar and Spice on August 4th. It's outside, under the tent, social distancing will be observed, so if you're interested in going, please do let Jim Hall know. Is that on our website? Do we put that on?
No, we haven't.
Could we, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mike Rowe, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Let's go to Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
Good evening, everyone.
Alright, Byron.
Just to let you know, we did complete roadside mowing for the first time. We will start again at the end of this month, since Mendon's done with tractor. I'm very pleased with the performance of that particular machine, and I think we're going to gain some ground on turning back some of our invasive species over the years. We will be starting construction next week. By doing some shopping around, I was able to rent an excavator like we talked about for about $2,000 less than I had antici- about, for about $2,000 less than I anticipated.
Nice.
So that was good news. Um, so we will be starting next week on that stuff. Um, and one more highway thing, Bobby Dress from, uh, Windmere Development, uh, emailed me the other day, wanted to know if, um, board was going to schedule a walk-around, um, in their development prior to them getting their paperwork around to, uh, possibly have their roads updated.
We said we would do one once we reopen, so...
Yeah, we should schedule one later for this month, Byron. We'll figure out a date, but tell them later this month.
She said probably at 6:00 at night would work best for that.
Think we can accommodate 6:00 at night? Sure.
Okay. Holding that in your hands to, to schedule that at some point.
It's Carmel Place up off of Killington Avenue to do a walk-around around the neighborhood to...
What date?
We didn't pick a date yet, just 6:00, 6:00 PM at night.
Yep.
Byron, what else you got?
Okay, and then, uh, in a water sewer matter, um, in January, we ran a red meters, uh, there were two meters that I discovered that were reading exactly the same as they did previously. Um, so we, you know, tell people based on, uh, average usage, based on previous, uh, meter readings. Uh, and then the COVID thing came up, so I did force the issue about getting meters fixed. Uh, so again, I had one more meter reading, um, and again, the meters were reading exactly the same as they did in January. Um, so what I would like to do is send a letter to those two people, uh, requesting that we be allowed to, uh, come in with our plumber, uh, and replace those two meters. Uh, we would have to be, you know, wear masks, uh, wear gloves, and then I would be the last one out, and I would dis- expect anything that we came in contact with on the other house. And if that's satisfactory to these, to people, they're, the both instances there are older people, and if they're not comfortable with that, then we'll just have to continue for a while longer, uh, doing kind of average meter readings. Uh, so if the board's okay with that, I will, I will get that letter out and, um, make arrangements for that. Uh, the other question that I have, one of the meters, um, was a new meter that was replaced two years ago. In that particular instance, that homeowner has a filter, um, to collect sand and dirt out of their well, that filter is after the meter. It needs to be the other way around, the meter, the filter should come first, and then the meter's signed the second. I don't, if the homeowner would be agreeable to that, we certainly would, uh, or I would recommend that we change that around if the homeowner was agreeable to that. The other meter is an older meter, um, has been service required over the years, and probably just, you know...
Okay. Uh, what's the, the board have any strong opinions either way, or let Byron proceed?
Yep.
Go.
It's, it's up to him.
Yeah, whatever you decide, Byron, we're fine with.
Okay. I'll be in touch with the homeowners and, and work with them. Um, that's all I have for this evening.
Very good. Anything for Byron?
Nope.
Very good. John Paul?
Paul's back.
All right. Thank you, Byron.
Okay.
We have, uh, Chris Clark, town fire chief, is here tonight. How are you, Chris?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Good to see you in person.
Yes, 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 yes. I don't really have anything to bring out, because I was hoping to get stuff for a fire duty, you know, out, and, uh, here, Richard.
You want a fire committee meeting?
Yes, please.
John Paul and I can make that happen very quickly for you. Well, only if Dell is there. John Paul, one day next week, fire committee meeting?
Sure.
Okay. Chris, we appreciate you, uh, accommodating our meeting tonight and letting us ruin your meeting room and so on.
Thank God, thank God.
I appreciate it. Uh, anything for the fire chief? I did want to mention you guys had a, a pretty good regional, uh, water training there last week, right?
Yeah, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago now, yeah.
Yeah.
So a lot of, six departments were involved in that?
Six departments in my well, and, 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 so...
Good.
Good training.
It's good to work with our neighbors and our mutual aid system, it's important, so nice job, guys. Uh, anything for Chris? All right, sir. Ed Dumas, town police chief.
Good, good.
Good, chief, how are you?
Not too soft, not too tough. Cultural service, we've had six stations here every... Up usual. The only thing I have is, uh, new, the new, uh, S199 to S299. Uh, we're going to get a list of stuff that we're going to have to...
You speak a little louder, chief?
Yeah, I can hear.
We have to get a list of stuff together of things that we're going to have to get, and that's going to be, uh, probably tasers, uh, updating some other stuff, and also cameras for our cruisers, and every officer will get one. I got some quotes, but I'm going to wait, put it all together, and I'll send out a packet to all of you and talk about it the next time we're together, and that's about all I have at this point.
Do you want to visit with your police committee? Have us take a look when you get it together?
Sure.
Before the next select board meeting?
We can do that.
Okay, let's do that.
Yeah, I, I just, I have a concern about your cameras?
Yep.
And your, um, tasers. My thing to you, Ed, and I'm being a pain in the butt right now, those are things I don't want to see wait, those are things that you have to have.
Can you hear the speaker?
It's not going to pick us there.
Can you hear me now, John?
Definitely can, can.
Okay. My thing is this, if you need, that stuff is important in my mind. It's a safety issue, and it protects the public as well as protecting you. So, so I'm being a pain in the neck. I, I want you to come to us when those things break, and I, and it, we have to find the money. It's not a matter of, um, I, we didn't budget for this year. To me, that's just as important as the gun on your hip and your police crews here.
Uh, appreciate it, and like I said, we'll get, I'll get the things, Ted just got the list today. I was busy on the case, and I had to do some other stuff, so I didn't have a chance to...
And that's okay. I don't even need a list, and I don't think Mary does, just, even if you have to call us and say, "Look, our cameras are broken," I, I think this board would speak to that and say, "We need them, we buy them."
Well, let's take a look. We're going to have a police committee meeting, we can go over the stuff on the list. We've gotten a little briefing on this anyway, so that was helpful, thank you. Thank you, JP. Um, but let's take a look, and as we just found out, we've got surplus that has rolled into, well, capital improvements, and I think we have a decent budget this new fiscal year in the police department, so I think we're going to be able to do this.
So are we going to do it sooner than later?
Well, two weeks.
Because I'm, I'm really uncomfortable without...
You guys meet, you guys meet, and then in two weeks we'll put it on the agenda and we'll do it. John Paul, what did you want to say, sir?
So I had spoken to the board informally that there were two items that had, have some urgency to them, and I wouldn't want to look back a month from now and say that we wished we had the tasers or the cameras two weeks earlier. Uh, and that's an item that, uh, at least according to the new standard, we should have had yesterday. So I was hoping the board might consider authorizing the chief to at least go forward with those two items, because there's no way we can't go forward, there's no way we can go forward without them.
So on the tasers, there's two things. We can buy them outright for roughly 70, $800. We own them there, but there's also a, a lease plan where we pay a little over $2,000 a year for five years. They guarantee the tasers for the five years. They give us, I think, two trading, uh, probes, they practice hoister issue, and als- they do that every year. And I think you also get other, uh, probes that you put in the thing that you can use. If we use them, we can replace them. So, having got all the information, but it looks like we go to the lease plan, it's going to be a little bit less than $1,000. But that, and the other one, you would buy them outright, but we don't, doesn't include all the, all the darts that we have. So, it may be in our best interest to lease them for five years, because then the machine is, or the tool is guaranteed for the full five years we have it, and by then, probably have to upgrade them anyways, because it's an electrical device. Uh, if somebody carrying it for five years, it's going to malfunction or wear out, or something will happen to it, and then we'll have to come up with that cost ourselves. So we're kind of leaning towards the lease program, but that would be something to talk to Mary and Sharon about, um, go from there. And like I said, just, Ted just got the information today.
Okay. So it sounds like there is some refinements that need to be made.
Then because we haven't had tasers for so long, we have to get trained again, it's going to be a full eight-hour day, so we got to schedule that. So even if we got them tomorrow, we wouldn't be able to legally use them until we got the training. So we got quite a few things rolling that we have to put together and make happen.
Yeah, this, and JP explained this really well. Um, this moves in line with the policy, the change in policy on use of deadly force.
Yes.
And tasers will give us that intermediate step, so...
One step more, uh, firearms, the tasers, the impact weapons, and all that's, uh...
Okay.
Pepper spray, whatever.
And what about the cameras?
The cameras, we can get them right off.
I think in the realm of what we've been seeing, I think it's very important that we get those cameras sooner than later.
So what's the cost? Do we have a quote?
Yeah, we can get them for like 500 bucks a piece, we'll get them five. Uh, we talked about upgrading the next system, but the guy, the rep, said it wouldn't be worth it. We have to buy new cameras in the cruisers as well as a body cameras, but if we just go with the old, uh, cameras, and you have a device that you plug into a, into a hotspot as well, a lighter, plug-in or whatever, and it's electronic or a magnetic thing hooks on the bottom of our cameras, so if you're in the cruiser and you get out, you don't have to unplug it, just get out that magnet, like, like, camera's fully charged all the time, so just maybe to make it last.
Yeah.
Whatever, in the car.
I, I move that we get the cameras.
$2,500.
You know what, Mary? Would, in the realm of things, I think we have to.
No, that's fine, that's fine. It wasn't questioned, I just wanted to make sure that was all part of the motion.
Yeah, yeah. And what I'd ask is the next time you need something...
Ed, I thought we only had to buy two of the cameras, one for you and one for me, I thought the other officers had them.
Uh, I think what we're getting those, a slight upgrade with new cameras, I don't know all the details. Ted, uh, like I said, just talked about that, so I don't want to say something that's not true.
All right.
But when I find out, I'll let Mary and Sharon, I'll give you a call, so...
Right, it's, and I'd like to see, because you got to protect yourself, too.
Right.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to spend up to $2,500 for five cameras, but we might not need the five. You're going to look into it, chief. But if we authorize tonight you to spend $2,500 on five cameras, you're covered.
If, if, it may be a little more than 20, it might be closer to 3,000, I don't know the actual, exact price. The guy from, uh, Camera, our rep, it's in North Carolina, we talked to a guy who's on California, and they gave us the name and the number for a guy in North Carolina, but he hasn't got back to us yet, they gave us a rough guessing of what it did cost, so it's not exact yet. Again, when I find out for sure, or like Sharon or, um, Mary know, we can make a decision then.
Okay. Yeah, I, so back to the police committee meeting, okay?
Yeah.
So I, we're, I guess we table this for the time being, until our police committee meeting?
I think we need to get the cameras, I, I make the motion, we move on the cameras.
Well, you've sort of got the motion on the floor. Um, Ed says it might take up to 3,000?
I, I don't want to tell you 25, and it's 27,000 or something like that.
Okay, so, so if, if you want, Sharon...
I'm probably making a motion to purchase the cameras at the price that the chief can get them at.
Yeah.
Okay, so are you withdrawing your original motion, Sharon?
I, I...
And someone can second, Ed, uh, someone can second John Paul's motion if they'd like?
Go ahead.
Is that you?
No, go ahead, he can...
No, because if somebody reads the minutes, the supplier's going to up it to $27,000. So if you're comfortable with 3,000, we'll say up to 3,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if, and if you have to change that, you can call us, and we can have a quick meeting.
I will.
That quick.
Okay, well, we still need a motion, we still need to vote on it. We need to figure out what the heck the motion is.
All right, so...
We have two motions that have both gone nowhere, so where are we with this?
Okay, John Paul, be quiet for a minute. I make a motion that we spend up to $3,000 on cam- on cameras as soon as possible. If that needs to be changed...
Okay, motion's been seconded.
Motion's been seconded. Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Chief Dumas, what else?
That's all I have, all I have is points.
All right, thank you. John Paul, Fagin, town health officer.
Yes, uh, so we had a, a situation developed Sunday night at the Holiday Inn where I learned that 400, um, like, folks from the New Jersey metropolitan, New York area, I'm not really clear of the origins, the, the, uh, place that the group that's running the event, uh, gave a, an address, a contact address in New Jersey. They are claiming to be campers under the revised regulations, except the facility doesn't meet the definition of a campground, and, uh, they're not observing any social distancing or face covering masks that I have seen, um, except for the person that I was talking to who was in charge of the affairs. But his, uh, their argument basically is they're operating as a pod, if you will. They claim to have, to be self-contained within the property, that no other guests are being allowed to stay there, that everybody there, um, underwent a COVID test and tested negative, although the problem with that is the tests were late May and June and are of no use to a July occupancy. Uh, but they also have some strict rules, none of their students can leave, or none of their, quote, campers can leave the Holiday Inn grounds, and they prevent people from coming on the Holiday Inn grounds, so they're basically self-contained. This group of 400, I understand, is going to be there for 21 days, which would meet the quarantine requirements, um, under the guidelines, and then they, uh, they may expect to group, uh, anywhere's up to another 300, but again, that group would be there for 21 days, under the same circumstances, but they don't meet the definition of a campground, and the hotel would be occupied way beyond its occupancy allowance if it were being operated as a hotel. So I pass this along to the attorney general's office, all of this information, and the state's going to be the one to have to respond to this. The problem I have with it is that the people who work at the Holiday Inn are exposed to this group, who are not engaging in social distancing or mask-wearing, uh, and as far as I could tell, even inside the facility. Um, they didn't leave the Holiday Inn property and go home, or go to the store, or whatever, and there doesn't seem to be any mechanism in place to check that, although they tell me they're taking the temperatures of people that come and go, um, so that's the current situation down there.
So I, um, believe we have probably two representatives here from this organization. I as well, when I was notified of this, um, in, in correlation with John Paul as our health officer and bringing in other board members, um, I contacted the governor's office, spoke to Jason Gibbs, the governor's chief of staff, uh, who referred us to Commissioner Schilling of the, um, Public Safety Commission. I also had a long discussion with, um, a high-ranking representative from TJ Donovan in the attorney general's office in regards to, uh, this, uh, and like John Paul said, uh, tomorrow we should have more direction from the state level as to, uh, how this will proceed. As John Paul said, the, the major concerns are the virus, the spreading of the virus and, uh, uh, community spread if it did, uh, come out of the facility with staff members of the Holiday Inn. So, um, we have paid a lot of time today to this matter, and, uh, thanks, John Paul, for your help so far. Um, Mary or Sharon, did you have anything to add?
No, I just, I don't like the idea that we weren't warned ahead of time. But then again, we've had, in my opinion, some things that the Holiday Inn hasn't followed before. So I guess I can't tell you that I'm surprised.
Yeah. So I guess I would follow up on that. Are the smoke detectors all functioning? All of the gas problems fixed? Everything now up to code as far as the state is concerned? JP?
JP?
John Paul, could you hear Mary's question?
No.
So Mary's question was, at the facility, so smoke detectors, fire alarm, electrical and plumbing, the propane and all that, has that been, all of those issues we've had, have those been satisfied by you and the state of Vermont in terms of safety?
There's been no additional reason to conduct any inspection since the state certified compliance with the Life Safety Code 101.
Okay. Okay.
So I don't know whether they're operational or not. They're supposed to be. But I mean, to be able to tell you today if everything's operational, I don't know. They're supposed to be, and I assume they are.
Well, I would hope with four hundred kids that somebody would go in and inspect because that's just not safe. We've already experienced and saying things were fixed, and then we found out they were not. And there were gas leaks. I certainly don't want to send children back home, pardon the expression, but in a body bag.
So I think from the town level, we've covered all our bases. Chief Dumas has also had a conversation with Commissioner Schilling, I believe, or your phone tag?
I sent him an email. He'll be in touch with me tomorrow.
Yeah. So I think we've covered all our bases from the town level to our contacts at the state level, from the governor's office, public safety, and the Attorney General's office. I believe that there'll be a response tomorrow morning from the Attorney General's office as to where they stand with this situation. And also, I don't know if the groups are connected or not, but it also seemed down in Bennington, Vermont, there's a large group who have also rented a college that is closed. So Bennington is looking at some of these issues as well. So any further discussion around this matter? Okay. Do we want to take public comment on this matter?
Well, I would.
John Paul?
What's that?
Public comment about this matter, should we entertain, or do you recommend, or just move on?
I think we're doing everything we can do. But if people want to say something, I think that on this issue, are they from the Holiday Inn?
Yes. What was your name, sir?
It's the rabbi.
I met John today.
You met, oh, that's the rabbi you met earlier, John, today.
Yeah. No, I don't have any objection to Moshe speaking as long as I can hear him. You have to put him right up to a mic.
Bill, can you give him your laptop?
Yep.
We're going to move him over here in a moment, John Paul. You can sit there. We're going to give you the laptop. Sir, what's your name for the record?
My name is Moshe.
Okay.
Is that John?
No, he's not on the screen. But just talk as if he's in the room, okay?
Hi, Moshe. Yes. So first of all, thank you, John, for the direction.
A little louder.
Yeah. I just want to correct one thing. All our COVID tests, and I brought some of them with me, most of them, have been done within two, three days before the children came. They're not two weeks or three weeks earlier. I think there was a misunderstanding of what he understood. Every test was given. Giving a test three days early would be a joke. And I get that. Every test that the children have taken were taken literally, we got most of the results literally before they entered the bus. Children came by bus. They came, went into the hotel. We canceled all our trips. We canceled all our entertainment, the boating, Killington, all that. That's life. We've got to stay healthy. No one's leaving the campus unless, unless they're going home. And that's when they go home. So there's no entry for guests. There's no entry for our people that are there on the property, playing ball, having fun, and we're not leaving the property. Everyone, any child that results didn't come back because they were backed up in lab corps in some of the places, weren't allowed to come to camp. I turned away sixteen children, fifteen children from coming to camp because the results hadn't been back. Everyone else was tested within three days. I control the documentation to whatever is necessary to, every day, we take the children's temperature. The employees wear face masks. Any employee needs face masks. Now, I'm very happy to make sure that happens. If for some reason we believe it's not idle personally, we make sure that does happen. But every employee on the property wears a face mask. And we did minimize the amount of employees. We cut the staff in half because we didn't want to have many people coming alone from the property.
Are you talking about camp staff that you brought with you, or are you talking about employees of the Holiday Inn?
Employees of the Holiday Inn and our camp staff. I know John was referring for employees that leave the property.
Correct. We're talking about the room, the housekeepers and the cooks and the...
The cook lives in the campus with us. We bought our own car. The kitchen staff is our own staff. They're there. They're volunteering with us. Nobody, no children, nobody is leaving the property. Very clear. All our shrimps.
Moshe, I would like to request copies of those tests. I have a memory of late May and a June test. So if you would leave copies of those tests, that would be helpful.
Just to ask, is it right to leave private information to children?
I don't mind showing... You can react to names. I don't care about the names. I want to see the tests and just, you know, the basic information, the doctors.
I brought with a bunch of tests that I was working on. I was waiting for the hell. Can I show them? That's a matter of...
Not at this time. But I appreciate you bringing them, but we'll sort that out.
Yeah. I think that's something John Paul has to look at.
Yeah. We'd have the health officer look at them.
It's a simple thing. I'm fine. But the commitment that we have is we're not leaving the property.
Okay. But what about the housekeepers? Are those yours, or are those people that'll be going home at night?
Those people are ours. And if that is the only issue, you should...
Well, I don't think that's, certainly, that's not the only issue. There's several issues. And normally, COVID-19, if COVID-19 wasn't here, we'd welcome you with open arms. I want to make sure that's clear. The town of Rattlin welcomes everyone.
It's not my fault. Like I said, the mountains, America, just everyone.
Well, we think so, too.
No, but I'm from New York, and I've been to New Hampshire. I have a lot of camp programs. It is true. And I know I'm welcome today very nicely. So don't be welcome nicely. Just have health to worry about. That's what we do. That's why I'm here.
Well, hopefully by next year, if you come back again, we can do a party up at our Northwood Park, or we can do something like that that shows these kids that we as Vermonters love kids. And you've probably got one of the best rectoractors in the state right over there. And there's nobody that takes care of kids any better. But I want it safe for everybody. This COVID is scary.
Our capacity is significantly limited to 50% of the hotel capacity. You've got all the rooms here, so there's a difference there.
The governor's executive order states that hotels in Vermont right now can be occupied up to 50% of their normal occupancy. You have a hotel with 400 people that has 150 rooms. You're exceeding the capacity on a normal business day versus this COVID-19 is 50% reduced. That's the concern.
So I just tell you our research, and I could probably run more, was that the capacity to the hotel is close to 600. And we have under 400 people. That was the way we did our research. Face-based, we can't count, we have 75%. He started at a number of 7% or so. That, because we turned away those children. That's why. Just giving you what I think it was.
Understood. And because of the confusion, and these executive orders came from the state level, the governor and the attorney general, so and that's why we had to do our due diligence. I hope you understand that, by getting them involved once we learned of this.
If you can play your jersey on Friday, I'm fine. I get it. And the point is, and the reason why, you know, whatever your expectations are, John, I work with you. I hope I work something out. I hope you don't want us to turn bad back. And the biggest commitment I can give you is that no one's leaving the property. No one. And everyone's tested within a couple days. And I have the documentation. I showed, I think I did this this...
I'm, your travels up. Did you stop at places to eat, or did they, no?
Okay.
In the bus. First of all, we have a show. So there's no stop.
Can you speak a little louder, Rabbi?
Yeah. We eat kosher. No one stops that way. We basically don't eat in our homes or in the restaurants that limits our community. We can't even go to a restaurant here. The question is going Walmart, going to Dick's Morning. We're not going anywhere. We needed a little basketball hoop and said, guys, it's just not happening. We're here. We're staying here. Let's respect the people. And that's really what it's all about. We're here. The kids are just so happy to be together that I can tell them whatever I want, and they're going to listen. Especially to us. We all have family members, and we all know people that want, we understand. It's not just an issue of Vermont. We sort life, and we really respect it. And my commitment is I work with you. Whatever needs to be done. You know, if it means us bringing in our own housekeepers that quarantine with us, we'll clean, we'll do it ourselves. It's not a big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I just want to say, Moshe, that I think it's very important you came to this meeting tonight. And I can attest to the genuineness. And I was just very impressed with the young people that I saw in your group, their behaviors, not necessarily the social distancing. I was encouraged by that. But you could tell that they were nice young people, and they were there to have the experience that you shared with us. So I think it's important you came tonight and let the town people know that.
Yeah.
Thank you. John, you have my...
I do.
So you and John can connect tomorrow. How's that sound, Moshe? And based on, we're also going to get some information from the state level. So we want to make sure everyone's playing within the boundaries of the executive order and everyone's safe and so on. So...
And if you want me to bring the tests, as a show, that everything is within range, I'll make copy of everything that I remember.
Yeah. I think that would be for John.
Yeah. John, can you work out the test questions with this gentleman tomorrow?
Not tomorrow, but I can on Thursday.
Okay.
John, just let me know if that makes a difference. But please, give me the benefit of the doubt. It is the right date for my children, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, no, I do.
All right, folks. Thanks for coming.
Just a real brief...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary.
Rabbi, you've, we're concerned about the kids. So if you see malfunctioning, plumbing, heating, smoke detectors, would you please make sure JP knows about it?
My name is Fellow. He checked every smoke along in the building.
Good.
Before my kids came in, we, actually him, he said we, went to every smoke along in every room and checked. In the kitchen, I know it was an issue. So that, you know, I don't want to say it. I knew it was an issue that he has handled. A little wall back. So we checked it ourselves.
Good.
He said, I have, these kids are on the myosis, and I've got to try to make sure. I had the tent disinfected. I brought my own team in to disinfect the whole building.
Yeah.
Again, every Friday, they're going to come back and disinfect. Okay? So we can only try. And I can just give you my commitment as well, okay?
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, thanks for coming.
Next year, you'll give us a nice little trip, right?
Thank you, gentlemen. Take care.
They were talking to you. He was talking to you.
Oh, yeah. We'll definitely make something happen. All right. Next year. Next year, yeah. You'll be in all, we'll get you all hooked up.
Okay. John Paul, anything further from the health officer?
No, not this time.
All right. Thanks. Committee meeting updates? Do we have any to talk about?
JP's got energy.
Oh, John Paul, do you want to talk about energy?
Oh, no, because I missed the meeting.
You did?
He did.
Huh.
All right. Mary, did you want to hit on this?
Uh, no, we'll wait until JP...
Did Ed ask for it?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. No, we did a...
I thought there was another meeting after that.
There was. It was the phone call meeting. And the minutes have been distributed. We were talking about possibly putting rooftop solar arrays. And the question came up also about the Park, parcel that the town owns down on Park Street, which I believe is being actively farmed. And I believe it's being actively farmed by my brother-in-law. So, but that raises the question of who's he paying the rent to? Just thought I'd toss that out there.
This is your brother-in-law? Oh, Family Feud?
Not that I know of, but...
All right. Thanks, Mary. I had a couple quick things. I think A, under table business has been handled. B, we handled tonight. C is still tabled. We talked about the Holiday Inn. I have that on my list. I wanted to wish publicly from this board and from the town to Rattlin City's Mayor Dave Alaire, who announced in the paper yesterday or today that he is going in for some surgery for cancer. So we from Town Hall want to wish Mayor Alaire and his family the best of luck here in the coming weeks as he goes through that. And so we're thinking of Dave. And we had a BCA meeting before this to assign poll workers for the August 11th primary. We also discussed the rigorous procedures for cleaning and sanitizing the polling places here at, or at Town Hall and at the school. And, you know, certainly, we would encourage as many people who would like to vote absentee, they certainly can. And just contact Carrie and Susan in the clerk's office or submit the, fill out the postcard that was mailed to you. So right now, the Board of Civil Authority, who runs the elections, feels very comfortable and confident with our procedure we have in place. It was a good meeting. And so people should feel, depending on their comfort level of going out and social distancing, they should feel confident that we're going to do everything we can at the town level to allow them to vote safely and keep them healthy. So anything about the BCA meeting, Mary or Sharon? Mary?
No. It's way easier if people request their ballots ahead of time and not wait until they want a sick ballot the day before. So please get your ballot requests in early because we've got a lot of them. And I do have a quick thank you to the city.
Go ahead, Mary.
Okay. Thank you, city, for paving Campbell Road. It's lovely. I might have done this last week, but it's worth saying more than once. Thank you, city.
Yeah. For those who on the camera who might not have heard, Mary had thanked the city of Rattlin for paving Campbell Road, which was, as we know, a topic of discussion with the town and city for a number of years now. So thanks to the city and their leadership for paving Campbell Road. Final thoughts from the board or department heads or employees before we depart? Bill and I, Bill and I are going to do our best to figure out if we can work out some of these technical difficulties, you know, as we want to meet in person. But Zoom and everything else, this has been a little flunky. So we'll figure out if we can do it a little better next time. And if not, maybe we'll come up with a different idea. Further discussion? John Paul?
All set.
Make your motion, sir.
Move to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mary. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Good night, everyone.